I'd like to introduce our candidates for the evening, Mr. John Otney. This is Lisa Benati-Chizzi and Mr. Bill Yeager. And moderating tonight, we have Ms. Sherri Johnson, the Monroe County School Board Association's Executive Director, as well as two high school student council members, Mr. Ben Soliet and Connor Curry.
Perfect. So, on behalf of the three of us, also welcome to the Penfield Meet the Candidates Night. Again, I am Sherri Johnson and I am your moderator for this evening. And I want to thank the Penfield School District for inviting me back again this year, and to the Cobble's PTA and the Penfield High School Student Council for hosting this evening, this evening's event. This year, the annual budget vote and school board election will be held Tuesday, May 16th, and residents may vote from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Penfield High School. Members of Boards of Education hold a unique public trust. They are elected officials, however they serve without pay and devote hundreds of hours to their duties. This community depends on its school board to provide for the education of the community's children, to see that the property and finances of a district are properly managed, and to ensure that many laws governing education are followed. Changes in education law and financing continue to make this a challenging time to serve on a Board of Education. This year, the three candidates are running for two seats on the Penfield Board of Education, and they have been introduced to you. Tonight's program will last no longer than two hours or until we run out of questions. Each candidate will give an opening statement up to three minutes long. After that, I will ask them questions with the help of our two student representatives. This is new this year, this is the first time we're doing this, so we ask that you bear with us. I'm going, they've introduced, they've been introduced, so I won't have them introduce themselves again. Questions will be directed to the candidates in rotating order, so that each person will have the opportunity to answer a question first. But all candidates will answer each question. Candidates' answers should not exceed two minutes. We have timekeepers who will facilitate, and a yellow card means there's 30 seconds remaining, and a red card means time is up. There will be people in the room distributing cards for questions from the audience. Please write your questions down and hand them back, and then they will be handed to me. All candidates will have the ability to answer each question, even if it's directed to a single candidate. As moderator, I have the discretion to combine similar questions, rule out inappropriate repetition or abusive questions, before I give them to our student representatives. They will actually ask the questions of you, unless there's a question that I think might need some interpretation, and then I'll ask that question. My decision is final. At the end of the questions, or when time is up, each candidate will have a closing statement of two minutes. So openings, three; closings, two. Okay? We're ready to begin. So I will start with Mr. Otney. Opening statement, please.
Good evening, and for those of you who don't know me, my name is John Otney. I'd like to share a thank you, the student council as well, and very important Cobble's PTA, Jen and Heather, and Mr. Sidoti. Twenty-six years ago, I left Cobble's as a fifth grader to move up to Bay Trail and then on to PHS, so it is truly an honor to be here this evening, as is the possibility of being able to get back as a board member, if elected, to the school and district that has given me so much. I'm a parent of two young children in the district, and I volunteered in many capacities throughout the district. Throughout my volunteer work as an active PTA board member and as a district advocacy committee member, I've become extremely passionate about the quality of education our children receive in Penfield. It's evident that we employ the best educators and support staff as we continue to be a high-ranking district. I have enjoyed regularly attending board meetings over the past two and a half years to learn all that I can about the Penfield Central School District. My participation within the district, as well as my professional experience in the public sector, has prepared me to make a meaningful contribution to the Penfield Board of Education. Penfield offers a robust and inclusive education program, however we face potential challenges surrounding funding, as well as the constant barrage of one-size-fits-all mandates, which are irrelevant to our high-performing district and stretch our tax base. These challenges demand collaboration and critical thinking among all stakeholders to ensure our tax dollars are used effectively and efficiently. If elected, I will push to advocate as a board and as a community for the elimination of one-size-fits-all mandates and offer logical solutions to lawmakers, such as setting thresholds for mandate applicability, or that proposals should come in the form of a recommendation as opposed to a mandate. I believe Penfield needs to continue to strengthen and build upon the education of the whole student to ensure our children are not just college-ready, but truly career- and life-ready. We continue, we must continue to acknowledge the challenges that our children in the district and community face surrounding drugs and mental health. The district possesses years of eye-opening, yet valuable data collected through youth risk behavior surveys regarding these challenges. If elected, I will advocate for a more proactive, continuous education policy surrounding these issues. Active communication among all stakeholders is essential in guaranteeing a successful public education system. If elected, I look forward to building upon the district's existing partnerships and working to establish new ones. I possess the ability to ask difficult questions, listen, conduct research, in an effort to help develop strategic solutions to the challenges that we face. I will enjoy working on the team that shares the same goal of continued success for the district and community that I'm so passionate about. Thank you.
Okay. Lisa?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Benati-Chizzi. I'm seeking reelection to the Board of Education, to the Penfield School District. I'd like to thank Sherri for being here, and Ben and Connor, I think that's great you guys are here today, and Cobble's PTA for hosting. Throughout my tenure on the board, it's been a great experience and my privilege to serve this Penfield community that I love so much. I'm also a Penfield graduate. We moved to Penfield when I was 10, so that was only like 10 years ago, so. I'm fully, just kidding. I'd like to say I'm very young. But I truly, truly love this community, I'm very vested in this community. I have three children, I'm a Penfield graduate, as well as a middle schooler and an elementary school member, so I'm very connected to parents and stakeholders. Throughout my tenure on the board, it's been my privilege to really learn so much about the Penfield district, really participate in not only internal committees, but also committees through the Monroe County School Board and collaboration, you know, across different Monroe County. From a personal perspective, I bring education background through higher ed, as well as the nonprofit sector and corporate finance and marketing experience. With your support, I look forward to continuing to serve the district. I think we have definitely many challenges that we face, and we really need to maintain our focus on students, working together collaboratively, and looking for really creative solutions that are fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd also like to thank the Cobble's PTA and Sherri. I really appreciate you being gentlemen. As a teacher myself, to have you guys involved is wonderful. My name is William Yeager. I am seeking election to the Penfield School Board for a term of three years, beginning July 1st. As I said, I myself am a teacher of over 17 years' experience in the public school system. I received both my bachelor's and master's degree from the Buffalo State College of Education, Buffalo State College, and began my career in education teaching social studies in the Cassidy Valley School District in 1999. If anybody needs to know where that is, just let me know, I'll be with it. You might need a map. After meeting, after meeting my wife, Megan, I relocated to Rochester, as she is from Fairport, and we, and took a teaching position against Childlight School District. Megan and I bought a home together in 2006 here in Penfield, thinking it would be just a great starter home. Life continued to go well for us. Throughout the last 11 years, we've been blessed with three amazing children, two of whom attend right here at Cobble's. As our family expanded and we considered moving, because we were growing out of our home, we started to ask around, and after much discussion with my wife and some really respected Penfield friends, people that I'm colleagues with, we decided that Penfield had way too much to offer to our family, so we decided to put an addition onto our home and sow roots right here in Penfield. This is where we will raise our family. We could not be happier with our decision. My decision to seek candidacy comes not just from my role as a parent who cares about the quality of my children's education, but also as a teacher who loves and supports the institution of public education. I genuinely care about the students, families, the teachers, and can speak to all these roles firsthand. I believe this is the greatest asset I could bring to the Penfield School Board of Education. My goal is to bring a more complete perspective of the students and the staff, those directly affected by policy, to the boardroom. The purpose of which is to, the purchase of, purpose of which being to best inform those programs that seek to support the creation of that well-rounded, whole student. Furthermore, I believe every student deserves this commitment. In educating students, I also believe that the educators and faculty of this school, of this school district particularly, should be supported in order to best serve our youth. In closing, I'd be honored and humbled to be a member of this Board of Education. My experience in diverse educational settings, passion for education, grasp of the current educational climate, and dedication to my family and community are what makes me a quality candidate for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have questions?
I have two.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we'll begin with the order that they are on the ballot, so Jonathan, you'll get the first question, and then we'll move on down, and then the second question will go up to Lisa, and then on down. So, okay. Oh, that's a tough one. Okay. And we're going to let you ask the first question, and again, you'll direct it first to Jonathan, and then he'll answer. Just read the question.
What is your favorite part of Penfield School District? What do you love about the district?
That's a great question. The community involvement and the team building that goes on here. Recently, I know it's been a superintendent's initiative to create, and I believe the board's initiative to create a team, a team environment, almost like a big family. And that, that's probably one of the most important, you know, we all lean on each other. Actively working with the PTA, we can, we lean on each other, we help each other out. And I think the integration is huge and goes a long way.
Excellent.
My favorite thing about Penfield is all the people that are here. I love all the students. I think the teachers are very committed. I think parents are so committed. I love being in the school after hours for a Cub Scout event and/or a PTA event, and you just see so many parents that are so involved and committed to the school, and it just, I love it. It's great.
Okay.
The thing that I've, that I love the most is there's a culture here, and it's a culture that is very supportive. As I've reached out to people and started discussing and asking questions of simply people from my neighborhood, and then on the way outward, how friendly and outgoing and willing to help and discuss issues. They talk positively about the district, but are willing to want to ask for more. And there's also a strong commitment to education, but a commitment to education that includes a lot of different people, not just the teachers, not just the students, not just the parents of those students, but also the larger community as a whole. As I've not just walked or been through Cobble's with my own children and been part of those events, but also as I've come to the high school and started driving around and looking around and going to some of my other schools, or other, the other schools in the district, I, it's, there's a very common connection there, and it's based in this idea that our education and our children, our children are the most important thing here.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, and Lisa, you get it first.
Do you support increased federal and state control of schools rather than increased local school board control?
No. Should I elaborate on that? If you'd like, it's your question. No, I don't support increased control from federal or state level. Frankly, I think part of our challenges here in Penfield is that at the state or federal level, they see global problems with certain school districts, and then we get certain rules or mandates that really don't apply, and then we have, I mean, APPR is a great example of that, a couple of years ago, where we had to change our whole APPR system, and it just really wasn't necessary for Penfield. We had a great system in place for that. So, my answer to that is no.
Okay.
No, I don't believe there should be any increased, the idea behind a, a school board is to give the local people, the community, the control over what is going on educationally and with their children.
Thank you. And Jonathan?
And I agree, absolutely not. The public education, the word "public" is, to me, in a sense, Penfield, local. It's not a federalized education system. The one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. There was nothing wrong with Penfield before, so my answer's no.
Thank you. Okay. So on to question three, and Mr. Yeager, you get to go first.
What is your viewpoint on gifted education?
Much like any subsection of education, there needs to be resources, teacher training, and opportunities for all students to reach that, to get enrichment or accelerated studies or the ability to further their skills and their education, regardless of where their level is, as well as you move up. There should always be something enriching and advancing every individual child.
Okay.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure.
Please.
What is your viewpoint on gifted education?
So, my personal viewpoint is I support the, the programs, actually, that we have right now, but we also offer those students more. We offer them, or we, we should give them more, we should give them everything we have. And I know the board has been a huge advocate for gifted and talented students. It's board policy, also, that's part of developing the whole student academic excellence. We need to continue to support programs such as Science Olympia, Independent Project Gala, and there's a specific parent group, Pace, that we need to continue to support, and so.
Okay. The next question. Wait, I didn't answer.
I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You answered there.
I'm just moving along. Thank you.
I know we want to get out early.
Yeah. No. I'm trying to manage what I've got here. I have three multitasking. It's not my forte.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I think our, our viewpoint is that all students belong to all of us. That's one of the things I love about part of our mission statement. I also believe that we need to meet the individual needs of all our students and make sure that, no matter what their need is, that we're meeting those needs. I think that's very important. I'm very proud of Penfield's challenge program. I know over the years, there are some elementary schools that have cut their challenge program, so I'm very proud that we have one. And I also just want to say really quickly that I'm also proud of the way that, that the teachers disseminate their program, that enrichment is available to all students at different levels, and then obviously given some extra to those students that, you know, are looking for that. So like, the Independent Gala is open to anybody. You know, you don't have to be selected, so I really, I really love that.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Lisa, I didn't mean to leave you out. So we're back to the beginning again. If I, if I'm on track. Next question.
When a board member feels strongly about an issue, but the whole board disagrees, the board member should then do what?
Being part of a board, the goal or the outcome is, is to reach consensus on matters. There's going to be, there will be differences of opinion or different viewpoints. Working together, you know, the board will develop a comfort level with each other and know how far to push their, I guess, look or outlook on items, but, but ultimately, it is a board. There has to be consensus, there will be give and take, so that's really all I have to offer with that.
Could you read that again? I'm sorry.
When a board member feels strongly about an issue, but the whole board disagrees, the board member should then do what?
I think it's important as an individual board member, because you are elected to support and represent your community, to be able to voice your opinion. And, and whether you do that, whatever, whatever meeting, it's a workshop or an open meeting, but then when you vote, obviously you have the right to vote no. But as an individual board member, it's your role then to support the, the board as a whole. So if the, the board votes yes, and your individual vote is no, then it's then your job as an individual board member to then support the board's decision, because you don't, you don't have any, your only collective board, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I didn't say that very well, but, okay. Mr. Yeager?
Again, the idea is to, to come to a consensus, and I believe that starts very early. You need to, to make sure that you are creating quality relationships, you're building trust early, and that when it comes time, and though you have gone through the process, and you trust the process, you trust those people now that are around you, that you've built those relationships with, that even if you disagree, there will, when it comes to consensus, I think it makes it more comfortable to say, okay, I had my voice, I spoke, people heard me, we went through the process, but now we're here, and I'm okay. That's where we need to be, and it's okay then to say, okay, they listened to me, they listened to what we had to say, we worked it out, the process went the way I would hope it would go. It's not the way I want it to go, but now I'm going to support that board decision, because that's what I'm here to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have another question?
Anybody else?
Before I pull some from the, hang on to that one, until we see what these ones are first. Okay. Oh, okay. All right. And Lisa, you get to start with the next question. Question five.
What do you think will be the most challenging aspect of your responsibilities as a board member?
Um, when I was a new board member, I think my most challenging thing was just getting to know the process. But I think our new challenges are going to be really around advocacy as a board moving forward, for financial funding from, from the state, with potential changes coming down from a federal level. I think advocacy is really going to be what our board needs to be working on moving forward.
Okay.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yeah.
What do you think will be the most challenging aspect of your responsibilities as a board member?
The most challenging aspects, there's a couple practical things, I see. There's the personal things, which is, for me, would be making sure that I'm learning and contributing at the same time, and doing a lot of listening, active listening, listening not to respond, but listening to hear. Beyond that, as far as the district goes, I see with the, the transportation building and some of the building projects, that have to be taken into consideration for all the fiscal responsibilities that will be there, as well as, you know, providing quality environment for our kids to learn and to feel really good about and proud about and to brag about.
Great. All right. Jonathan?
Taking that question as an, at the individual level, initially, obviously, learning, learning the ropes of the board. I have a list, a two-page list of acronyms, so that alone, I mean, I work in, I work in aviation, we have a lot of acronyms, but education certainly trumps that now. So that, that, that will initially be my biggest hurdle, is, is learning what I don't know, because I don't know what I don't know. And then as a whole, the board, our biggest, our biggest challenge will be funding, dealing with the funding issues.
Okay. All right. So the next question gets to go to Mr. Yeager, and there you go.
Do you support Common Core?
I do support Common Core. I support standards that are rigorous and are going to bring our kids from where they are now to where we're going to want them in the future, to be competitive globally. There are certainly aspects of Common Core, particularly testing and some other issues that we know have been there, but standards for our children educationally is what we want. And they're going to be a little difficult, and they might be a little challenging, but the teachers in this district have done a phenomenal job of implementing that and making it differentiated for our kids and making it reachable for our kids to reach those standards. And we can see that with, you know, with the news reports of Penfield being high up education, and the whole, as well as, and that does translate to the whole, that idea of the whole student and to those other aspects of art and music and so on. It just bridges our.
Thank you.
Standards are a necessary evil in, in education. We've always had standards, we always will have standards, and we have to continue to adapt to, to challenges and increase those standards, make them more rigorous as time goes on. Common Core is a one-size-fits-all mandate, to me. That's how I, my view on it. Penfield did well without it. There's a lot of things attached or associated with the climate that we're in right now with Common Core, and I guess the public's view on it, and, and I don't support some, some aspects of it. I'm definitely against linking any test score to teacher evaluations. I worry that it may demoralize the teaching profession, so attracting new, new teachers may be an issue. Are the teachers allowed to do what they have a passion for and teach outside of the box? Or is there one way and only one way of doing it? Will that negatively impact gifted and talented students? Those are questions that I need to dive into. And I also worry that anything not associated with the Common Core standards, which Penfield has done a good job vertically aligning curriculums, I worry that anything not associated with that will be subject to funding or cuts, so.
Okay. Lisa?
I agree with you. Can I just say that?
Sure.
And then that, no, I'm just kidding. Dino! I, I agree that we need standards. Standards are very important. I think Common Core got a very negative kind of political or cultural sense from the public, really is based on the APPR being tied to the test scores for teachers, and also just the implementation rollout. It just was poorly rolled out. It was quickly rolled out, and it really didn't give our teachers and community and administration time to really wrap their arms around it. So, and I think it's changing again. I mean, right now, they're, they're, the Board of Regents looking at different standards, they're having parent input, and then we're going to kind of be doing this again. So, I really go back to that advocacy piece when we talk about this, and what are we going to be looking at from an advocacy piece at state ed?
Thank you. Okay. Back to the beginning.
Penfield seems to have great programs for gifted students and for students who may struggle. What about very average students? Can you talk about opportunities you are familiar with and what you would do to advocate for these students?
Sure. That, that, that somewhat goes hand in hand with how we approach gifted students. We have to find something. There has to be something that we, we have to find that, that triggers that average student to, to want more, you know, to be hungry for more. I was an average, average student, and, you know, the, the technology program at Penfield High School is what, what got me going and what triggered me and allowed me to get to where I am today. So, the teachers have the ability to, they're the professionals, they have the ability to hone in on students' wants, needs, likes, and hopefully address those by recommending programs, additional programs for students. It also goes the other way, you know, if a student is not being offered something that they're very interested in, I believe the student should feel comfortable to meet with a counselor, a principal, whomever, teacher, and, and see if we can accommodate their needs.
I think we really have great programs for all students. In terms of, I don't know if any students are really considered an average student. Frankly, I think all of our students have strengths and weaknesses. I really like at the elementary level that we have that diamond sort of RTI model, and those four viable questions that we look at across all curriculum, where we say, you know, what do students need to learn? How do we know if they know it? And then it goes that diamond, you know, if they're getting it, what are we going to enrich them? And if they're not so getting it, you know, how are we going to make sure they get it? So I love those pieces about it, and I think as they move into the grades, into the middle school and the high school, there's just so many electives, there's so many opportunities for kids to find, you know, what their niches and where their strengths are, and then get their weaknesses supported, if they have those.
Just to kind of go off of what you said there is, one of the things that I think that it starts very early, and one of the things that we noticed at Cobble's that got us very excited, was that there was, my children came home and, and mentioned that there was an opportunity for them to learn languages other than English after school. And to me, this was wonderful, and it was an exposure-type program. They were exposed to it. They learned some things, but they came home really excited. If you have more of those types of programs as kids, average children, we're going to call them average, exposed to all these different things, they're going to find a niche they can excel at, and they will take that, they'll feel confident in it, and they'll have already gone through some of those examples and some of those experiences, and really be looking to maybe become above-average, accelerated in those particular. become above average, accelerated in those particular areas. Within the classroom, providing a lot of, enough teacher training and professional development to maybe locate where you can use some sorts of differentiation or some different programs to bring out those children or to show, or to give them experiences that they can excel at, and then maybe give them those avenues, I'm sure that would go a long way.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Lisa, you get the next question first.
What is your best leadership trait that you will use if elected to the board?
My best leadership trait? I think I'm a people person, and I go out of my way to make people feel welcome and comfortable.
My best leadership trait would be probably simply to be able to listen in here and then take that information and connect bridges, connect people, connect ends, to help them maybe make that connection and to find ways to create things that they want to do, but to put more of those people in those connected positions. I can be here, I can, you know, this is somebody who wants to work with the district on some issue, let me make those connections for you.
My experience on a, in a board-type setting and leading people is really just that, that's a positive. I frequently build relationships among groups, have no problem leading people through change, so.
Okay. Thank you. And then we start with you.
What do you feel your role is as a school board member to address the mental health of our students?
There can be no real learning without, without supporting the mental health of our kids. It is important to do a lot of research, it's important to go out and gain information, data, see what's going on in other places, reach out to maybe areas that have had similar issues, and start talking with them, start reaching out to as many advocacy groups as you can. And for me particularly would be to reach out to people that I know that are in the field that could say, hey, this is, you know, what you're doing, and here's some other ideas, and bring those to the table.
Can you repeat that, please?
What do you feel your role as a school board member to address the mental health of our students is?
As a school board member, you know, we don't, we won't, or I won't be directly involved with developing any type of curriculum. We can obviously work hand in hand with the superintendent. What I would promote or advocate for is that we have data, let's put more resources into looking into the data. Every year or every other year, I believe, we do that student risk behavior survey. And so that's tangible data, it might not be positive, but let's take that, use that, see where we can, how we can enhance a curriculum around that. One thing that we just, the district just did was put on a community forum regarding mental health and suicide prevention. That's one step, a positive step. I think we need to continue to maintain quality counselors, both in-house and I know the district has allocated resources to outsource, outsourcing counselors, the Delphi contract, and really just do what we can to bring awareness out and then acknowledge the fact that it's okay that folks have mental health problems and run with that. We owe, you know, we owe it to kids, children.
Mental health has been an increasing issue, and I think it's rising at double-digit rates at the adolescent level for the last several years. I'm proud that this district has brought a panel to talk about tough issues, drugs and mental health this year. From a board perspective, as a board member, I think it's our role to support mental health from a budgetary standpoint, in terms of counselors, in terms of professional development for our counselors and staff and teachers to support students, and to support programs through policy.
Okay. Terrific. Okay, back to Ms. Rott.
How do you distinguish between your role as a board member and the district's administration's role?
We're, the board is there to support one person, directly to support one person, the superintendent. Sorry, mid-sentence, mid-thought. Can you repeat that one?
How do you distinguish between your role as a board member and the district's administration's role?
Okay, so in addition to what I said, the board's role is to develop policy, which comes usually to the board as a recommendation, or could come to the board as a recommendation from the student, the superintendent. We have to do, the board has to do what they need to do to support the superintendent, to accomplish the mission or task, the district goals. But we're, you know, high level, and we support everybody below.
Okay.
I forget again, sorry.
How do you distinguish between your role as a board member and the district's administration's role?
So our most important job as board members is to hire a superintendent and evaluate a superintendent. So our administrative role is really in that evaluation process of that superintendent, and also in terms of policy, is a way to administer the district and fiscally through our budget process.
Simply, again, the superintendent is really the only employee that the board really watches over and supports. As far as the role of the board member outside of that, is simply to, again, support the district and the superintendent's, through the policies that we make. Their job is to make sure that those things are being carried out and running smoothly at each building by how they lay down information to their principals, it could lay down to assistant principals. That's not what we're here to do, we're here to simply support them in that endeavor by creating policies and programs that best support the students and the teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we have one more question left from the audience, so I don't know if anybody else has a card that they would like to turn in. Otherwise, we'll ask this last question, and then we'll move on to the two-minute closings. And Ben, you have the last question.
Will you be comfortable with meeting and discussing issues with our legislators in Albany?
Lisa, I have you starting that one. Oh, me? Oh, yes. I've had the opportunity to be part of the Legislative Committee this year through Monroe County School Board, so that's been a great experience. I've not taken a trip to Albany, but I hope to do so. And I've also had the opportunity to meet with legislators at our legislative breakfast, so I think that's a great opportunity for us to come collectively together with other school board members and superintendents in the area and advocate together.
I would be very comfortable, we've worked with the Monroe County legislators before just through my district and with our children, the students that I have. Yes, it's obviously in a very different capacity, but I have no issue there.
Same here, I have no issue. I've got just over seven years of experience working in the federal government, and I've dealt with lawmakers at the local level, state level, and federal level, so. And being on the district's advocacy committee, I've got a flavor for the, I guess, the method in which the board pursues lawmakers and pushes advocacy agendas. So I have no issue with that.
Okay. We did get one more question from the floor, and Connor will read that, and Mr. Jaeger, you get the first stab at it.
What experience do you have in creating policy?
The only experience that I have really in creating policy is those policies that we have that come directly from within my district, within my personal profession, which is we have our own personal team policies and community policies and so on. The processes are probably too different, there is a lot of, we all have to listen, there's a lot of different interests when it comes to what the English department or the math department, particular times of year, there has to be a lot of consideration. So there's a great deal of time, again, building relationships and trust and really trying to make sure that you're, you're not, you're trying to support your kids, the students, whether that is through what you're doing or what you can help somebody else do. It's no different here, a lot larger scale, much more important, but it has similar connotations.
Thank you.
I hate to do this, can you repeat that again, please?
What experience do you have in creating policy?
Again, working in the public sector, I've been on committees where it was our job to create policy, to create federal regulation and guidance. I've led a team as the face of a bargaining unit because we did, we called it pre-decisional information, and essentially it was where all stakeholders got together and had input, how is it gonna affect, you know, Group A, Group B, and Group C. From that, the committees that I've been on would work, I was able to see results, I was able to see guidance published, I was able to see one regulation published, and that's my experience with it.
Excellent. Lisa?
I have experience with policy through the district. I am not part of the policy committee, but we all collaborate on policy and discuss policy and, you know, make edits before a board meeting or during a board meeting. From my personal experience, my professional experience, I've created a lot of policy for a local nonprofit, both for kind of program-related policies and administrative policies. And previously, I worked in a heavily regulated industry finance, which was more compliance-oriented, so I did a lot of policy work there.
Okay. Excellent. All right. That's all the questions we have at this table, and so now we will start with our two-minute closing remarks. And Jonathan, Mr. Rott, you go first.
Oh, it doesn't go the opposite?
No.
Okay. Well, thanks again for you folks and Mr. Sidoti, Cobles PTA, and everybody that's here tonight, and I guess we're not live, so whoever's at home. The Board of Education plays a vital role in governance and implementing policy that improves the education of our children. If elected, I will bring a new outside-of-the-box perspective to the board. I will continue to ask questions so we understand the value of each program the district offers and how it really affects each student. I'll push new advocacy topics in an effort to reduce external burdens on our district. I will work tirelessly with fellow board members, district staff, and the community to ensure Penfield's continued success. I ask for your vote on May 16th, and it will be an honor to serve on the Penfield Board of Education should I be elected.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for being here tonight, again to Sherry, Connor, and Ben, and Cobles PTA for hosting. If you have not met me before, I hope you have the opportunity to get to know me a little bit better and to truly see my love for this community and my deep, deep commitment to student success and the success of this community and our school district. As a Penfield parent, Penfield graduate, I'd be honored to continue to serve, and I ask for your vote on May 16th. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank everyone who's here and who came. Gentlemen, brother, Sherry, thank you very much. Cobles PTA, of course. As an educator and someone with seventeen years of experience, someone who has really, my wife and I have created a life here that we want to now support the community, we want to give back, we feel very blessed with what our decisions and what we've been given here. My children come home happy, learning, and I want that to continue for every kid in this district, for every student. My candidacy comes out of a passion for education since I was young. I was one of the few people who went to college, knew what I wanted to be, saw my uncle and aunt teach in various ways in the Williamsville District, alternative education, many different things that I was around. Buffalo State prepared me to be a very good teacher, I owe a lot of gratitude to them. And my experiences through, in rural districts, very poor, in city districts, I've worked with urban districts, if not directly in them, gives me a lot of experience. And I would really appreciate your vote on May 16th for the board. And I promise that I will dedicate a great deal of time, as I've spent many different occasions speaking with my wife, saying, you know, you sure about this? You know, we said, listen, this is what we want, these are our children and our friends' children, and we want to do the best we can for them as well. Thank you.
Okay. So that concludes our Penfield Candidate Night, and I too want to thank all of you for attending for the current Board of Education, for our candidates this evening, for the Cobles PTA, and if we could give a hand to these gentlemen for doing a great job.